.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. All right, let's get started. Thank you, Mr. President.
[Laughter]
They were talking over you, so... I did the Marines thing.
Before you lost your voice.
Let's have a memorial silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Willie. All right.
Bob Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Chip Babb.
Here.
Can we do that, or... Approval of the minutes of April eighth meeting. All of this procedure copied. Any questions or comments or corrections?
The only thing is Mark Farr isn't spelled on the first page. It just says Farr. We don't have an E R. That's the only thing I've...
She does preach very good. You felt... [Laughter] And that's good.
We made extra in those letters.
Any other corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Call on the board, please.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Babb.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Court Treasuries report.
Okay. Think all of you have seen the Councilable Voucher Register in our docket. If you look at our month ending reports, the general fund's in good shape. Four hundred eleven thousand sixty-two dollars. Everything is really good. One thing I'd like to say, if I could continue talking here a minute. This community had an experience this week with a little boy that was lost. And I know several of our town employees were there and helped. Some as early as four o'clock in the morning volunteered their time and helped. And it was a community effort. And the General and Fire Department told me they had almost three hundred volunteers out there. So it just makes you proud to live in this area. And I'm proud of our police and our firemen and our town employees. They all chipped in and helped, and it was great. Thank you.
Totally agree. Can I have a motion for the Court Treasuries report, please? So moved. And a second.
Second.
Willie, roll call, please.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Chip Babb.
Aye.
Okay, Department reports, I'm gonna change it a little bit from the order of... I prefer the... Please Chief, go first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council Police Department, month of report for April. April was Child Abuse Awareness Month, so if you go by the P D, there's a sign out there and some whirling gigs to draw attention. They did that countywide, just to raise some awareness. We also, we had some fun with the library. It was Library Appreciation Week in April, and we delivered them donuts. So that went over well. We just purchased a new safe for the building to house our ammo and our extra weaponry. If you come by, it's in the back room. We had a little safe, but it was for anybody that ever buys a safe, they're like garages, you'll fill them up. So we used the old one we had, we put it in the property room, so they have a secure place to store weaponry that's used as evidence or whatever in there. So we were able to make that purchase and get it moved in the other day. Drug Takeback Day. We participated, that's the national campaign. We always had the drop box on station, so we get drugs periodically. But we did the one-day drop-off. We only got about... Pendleton only got about thirty-five, forty pounds on that day, but I'd had a bunch in my office waiting for this event, so then I could take them all down to Indy. Overall, I transported about three hundred fifty-seven pounds of unused drugs. And that's everywhere from where our loved ones died and their medications left over, expired medications, stuff like that. So as a reminder, we do have the drop box. We take them throughout the week and then transport them down to Indy for disposal once we collect a bunch. And then the biggest deal of April is the fact that the council came through with our eleventh officer. And the department's super excited about that, very appreciative. And we hired Jerry Branson. And I brought Jerry here tonight to meet you, because he's a night shifter, so I didn't know what nights he's around. But Jerry comes to us from Elwood also. And Lucas Trailer's back here also, he's from Elwood. But I'd just like to introduce you to Jerry Branson. How do you do?
Well, doing pretty well. Glad to have you.
Thank you. And as I put in the report, he's a 2017 graduate of Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. Four-year degree from University of Indianapolis and served two years in the U.S. Coast Guard. And he's assigned to night shift. He was also an I T specialist for the county, so in our world of computers, it's kind of a nice asset to have. But I told him I'm not hiring him for computers, I'm hiring him for to be a policeman. And I think he's excited about that. So I'd like to welcome Jerry. And then lastly, today, this is Law Enforcement Appreciation Week, and Amy Turner from State Farm bought pizza. So that was nice of her.
And very nice.
Yeah. And she got enough that the day shift got to share with the night shift, so... And that is all I have. Thank you.
Justice Carter, about his report. Park.
I don't have anything to add, if you don't have any questions for me.
Yeah, here's a quick check. On last month, we had, I think we had a visual on the proposed playground area.
Yes.
On that for visual, we didn't have a discussion on that last month, if I recall. But the, I was thinking the price tag of that, I think like over a million dollars.
Yes.
For that as proposed. Are you... How do you propose to go now?
We're still exploring ways to finance that project, whether it's through a bond issue or fundraising some of it. We're still exploring different options for how, how to make that happen.
Okay. Do you think you'll make a decision this year, or...
That would be our hope, probably. We've had some conversations with O W Corn out of Westfield about what our potential bonding capacity could look like come next year when we have one that rolls off. So hopefully by, I would say, budget time this year, we'll have a path that we're gonna take for that.
Okay, all right. Visual look good, or playground area look good?
Yeah, I think the conceptual design is, is really neat and be a great asset.
Thank you. That's all I got. Thanks, Sheriff.
Yep.
Planning Department, all of us have got a report?
Well, I'll just do it with the town man. I'll do it with the town man.
Wait, wait, I'm gonna say, I like her report.
Okay.
It spells it out very easy to read.
Great. Well, we can go right into that first. So I think the, on Kayla's report, the first thing is just to look at the number of permits for this month as of last, compared to last year, the same month. And then what we've done this year compared to last year. So at this point, if you just go over to fees collected for the permits, just look at how much higher that is. More than doubled the number. And then gives you an idea of just how much more is gonna happen this year. Also, I give you a sheet here. This reflects it too. If you look at the pink number, that's the number of fees that are collected for permits, cap and cap, system development fees. And it's doing quite well. If you can see. And Denise, if you could go ahead and go to my first slide. We're gonna welcome aboard also addition of new police officers. We have T J Fout, Fout, which is gonna, he's gonna be at the street department. He's already started. And then starting Monday, Monday is Hannah Urbansky. She brings to us the masters in urban planning. We're looking forward to her coming onboard. And right now, on purpose, we're keeping the position open for the second street department equipment operator. That's because T J's on board, we wanna get him up and running a hundred percent, so that he can do call, then we'll, then we'll get aggressive about hiring the next person. Next slide, please. Major activities, you're gonna see us planting sixty trees that is a joint effort between a D N R grant that we have. The guys have also, in the last month, added capacity for the street events, both water and electric. We have even more stormlines that are now open, because we continue to do the one day or two days a month, bringing in that jetting machine. And today, we found a, I had no idea, nobody else in the street department knew about it. We had a storm line that runs along Pendleton Avenue there between Madison and, what would that be, Indiana Avenue. Pop them in a little today, and I go, Cookie, do you know this was here? And he goes, I have never seen this. And it was a huge line, so lo and behold, and I need keeps getting peeled of our stormwater situation. And then, as a lot of you know, we received a Community Crossings grant for Franklin Street. It's gonna go out to bid this, I think in another week. So we'll have a second project going. And then, of course, Water Street, they started digging this week. And right there at the pond, and then they're gonna work this way towards Water Street, and then they'll start excavating in Water Street. Next slide. So billing in the planning department, they've had a large number of permits, as you, as we talked about earlier, coming in. The street department, they've been ramping up for the tree planting. And the D N R is very strict about how we do it, it's not guys just going out there and ordering in. Believe me, Denise will tell you, it's been a learning lesson, that D N R standards. And then our guys were out there, they loaded up two of the gators and went out there right away to help with the search the other, or the other day. Like the department, they did a good job at adding those electric hookups. And then the same with the water department. You'll see yellow boxes out there over the pits. We wanted to put a yellow box over that, because we were, in the past, we've opened up these pits. And lo and behold, we'll probably have, if we had to put these boxes over it, and then the stickers come out of it for the vendors, somebody was gonna break a leg, fall into one of those holes. And so that's what we do. And I think that should be it. Any questions? Just have a comment. I just wanted to say that, talk into some of the members of the Pendleton Business Association, they were very thankful for the water and electric hook-up. Yeah. Yeah, they expressed that to me, too. So hats off to Greg and Dustin's guys. Appreciate it.
Scott, on the Water Street project, will they have to close the street entirely when they...
They're gonna try not to, there may be a day, but I know they will have to do it when they're paid. But as far as when they're...
Excavation, they will.
Excavation, they're gonna try and keep a later open, can't guarantee it. Because they are gonna have to, they're gonna make a cut laterally and horizontally.
Okay. Thank you. Trip to line.
Good evening. As you can see from my report, kind of another busy month for us. I think it's gonna be the trend for the rest of the year. Compared to year-to-date runs, we had a hundred and thirty-two last year, and now we're up to two hundred and twenty-three this year. So keeps getting busier and busier for the fire department and stuff. So you can see it's broken down into the different jurisdictions and where we responded to both of the runs that we had and the call types that we actually responded on. There's some of them, the carbon monoxide water rescue, power lines down, gas leaks, and then two of the station coverage, where we actually... One was covering Lapel Station, and the other one was, we had dispatched to cover Anderson Station while they were working on a couple house fires. We, I was approached by one of our members who was bored one day and decided that he wanted to take the FAA Part 107 and be a drone pilot. And asked us if we would consider getting a drone. And I was like, okay, sure, tell me the details about it and everything. So he presented me with the details. He applied for the South Madison Community Foundation grant for the drone, we were accepted. We have ordered the drone. They are on back order right now, because it's the latest and greatest of the technology. It's got infrared camera, it's got thermal imaging, so we can use it. It's kind of a bad timing, because we could've used it the other night on that, but we had the thermal imaging cameras out. So it's kind of a nice asset to have. The fire department and the ambulance service is in heavily with changing the batteries for the Project Lifesaver. So we have few kids that are around that have the tractors and stuff. Emergency management has the antennas that are able to follow the sensors and stuff if a kid walks away that is in the Project Lifesaver program. So this is another tool in our toolbox to help not only the fire department for big fires, we can see where the hotspots are at, but as well as search and rescue and assist law enforcement if we need to, anything like that. So that'll be in our toolbox here within the next couple weeks. So I've got two pilots already certified right now, Chief Moore's one of them, and Bill Davidson's the other one, myself. And Frank Rickus is going through the class to become the third and fourth pilot to have. So we'll have plenty of pilots to fly this thing around and stuff. It's pretty in-depth to be able to go through it, just because it's dealing with the FAA and stuff. So it's, E M A has one, we've got one, and they're the only two right now in the county. Emergency Management Agency over in Hamilton County, they've got three of them, so, and they were all flying the other night. So it would've been nice to have another one up in the air, just to expand our search a little bit more and stuff. So with that, that's my report. If you have any questions, comments, all of you are happy to entertain us.
Any questions for the chief?
One dumb question. Can you buy insurance on a drone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Trust me, no, absolutely.
[Laughter]
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to stay up there.
Okay.
Next I go over to Jed, is the fire territory discussion. We, all of us have the draft. I'm gonna call it the final draft. Finally, the final draft. Jeff smiled, because we've worked hard on this. But everybody needs to understand what, what this really is, is gets us started to get the fire territory going. And it's like splitting the cost between the four entities, which is Fall Creek Township, Green Township, Ingles, and the Town of Pendleton. And so that we can get to the point where we got the fire territory. It also guarantees the contract monies for the fire department for 2021 and, not 2022, but 2021, that Ingles is paying and what Green Township is gonna pay. Fall Creek Township, it is still the same like Green Township. We're not changing that for Fall Creek Township. Most of it's about the money involved to get it going. There's still a long way to go, and... Well, chief, take off, I guess.
No, that, I mean, that's, that's it. It's just, you know, the biggest hurdle is, is to make sure that, you know, everybody is not caught off guard by this. We wanted to make sure that, you know, both entities, you know, the Ingles Fire Department as well as my fire department, you know, we've had very good communication back and forth about this. They're well aware of what's going on and stuff, so, you know, nobody's in the dark on this when, when it's been brought to light, so...
One thing, I'm gonna add that, what he just said right there. And I was probably one of the biggest ones to raise can about it, but going to Ingles, whether we went all the time, some of the time, going to Ingles, we were paying for that. Town of Pendleton and Fall Creek Township, and that's always been a thorn in my side. I'll just tell you, what is in this new contract, Ingles is paying the town a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for fire and ambulance service. And for 2021. And also have in here, and that's a plus force, because we was doing it for nothing because of mutual aid. A lot of people don't understand mutual aid or what it is. And mutual aid is no money exchanged, it's mutual aid. And it was time to make some big changes on that. Where, do you still do mutual aid? Or want to start getting some money out of it for our department and our township department, so... Questions from the council?
Yeah, on, on doing that, on the, on the contract for 21, when would that be implemented? When would that start? If we approve this?
Retroactive to January the first. It's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for 21. Jeff, you have like thirty-five thousand for Green Township. Ingles is paying monthly, I think?
Yes, that's correct. Fifteen, it pro-rated it out to a hundred and ninety thousand. And this, this document is effective when all four bodies were approved. So if we can approve it tonight, we'd be, I don't believe anyone else has voted on it yet.
Fall Creek has.
Fall Creek has approved it?
They did, of course, Thursday, Tuesday night.
Okay, and then we have the Green Township Board and the Town of Ingles Council, so we'll be able to...
The Town of Ingles is gonna meet on the twenty-fourth. Last word I got.
Okay, by statute, you're required to have three public hearings on this before. So how does that play with this? We agreed to this, and you're moving law forward, but you have not had the three public hearings, how does that interact?
Yeah, right, there's still, as Chet said, there's still a lot of things that have to be done before the thing is officially formed. This is, this, all this is, all four parties saying, we're gonna do this, we're all gonna come together and pay the money to get to those three public hearings and ultimately decide. So that's what, that's what this MOU does.
All the... All of the...
That's a good, yeah, that's a good way to put it.
All of the Baker Tilly financial stuff and all our assessed values, capital gains and non-capital gains, tax caps and everything, will all be refigured with the three entities that's gonna be in this. I say that, there's four entities in this contract, but there's only gonna be three entities, which is Green Township, Fall Creek Township, and the Town of Pendleton, starting out. Ingles is buying in because they wanna be in it, but right now, it's not time for Ingles to come in. Okay? Because of the financial side of it. Their assessed values are assessed values. Is that a fair way to put it, Jim?
That's right. It, the, the analysis showed that doing it that way would possibly lead to a tax break for other taxing units down the, down the river, rather than do it in one big smash.
Right.
How does the EMS component of this work, starting in 21?
So what, what happened is if, if this contract is established and signed by all four entities, and then what will happen is, is a contract from the Town of Pendleton to P E A, Pendleton Emergency Ambulance, will be signed as well. And then, because P E A is a separate entity than the fire department. So then what will happen is, is the P E A has already agreed and the board has voted on to dissolve Pendleton Emergency Ambulance and then roll it into the fire territory. But they have, they have already agreed to that in the board meeting.
Okay, under the contractual language, if we start for now, 21, if all this is approved, the, that's where we take place, as far as...
Yeah, it's already, they, the board has already voted on it, and in the minutes of the meeting of the Pendleton Emergency Ambulance Board, it says is whenever the fire territory is established and it is, it is dissolved and rolled into the fire territory.
Does that applicable to the contract language, too?
Yeah.
Because territory's not established yet, it's just the table.
It's a, it's a handshake, gentleman's agreement that yes, Pendleton Emergency Ambulance will provide EMS coverage for the fire territory or the contract...
That's spelled out.
For the area, it's, yeah. Still would be the Town of Ingles, Green, Fall Creek, and Pendleton, and P E A would cover that.
Everybody needs to understand that fire territory at the very earliest, right now, if we get everything signed and get everything else done to get to that point, the earliest that it can become... the earliest that it can become a fire territory is January the first of 2023. So it seems like a long way away, but it's not. When you look at all the timelines that has to be done, Steve has worked hard on this with us in our, all these meetings we've had in the last year and a half, trying to get to this point. And, question, I'm sure there is. I see the school board, they're more than welcome to speak up, Joel. You got anything, Dr. Hall? I'm not trying to shove you off.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if Bob had anything.
Yeah, I've got a ton of questions.
Thank you. Just have a few things. Mark Hall, superintendent of the school board for South Madison Schools, speaking on behalf of the school board tonight. Some of this information may be somewhat redundant, but I felt that I wasn't overly prepared last time I was here. So I wanted to clarify on some of the things we talked about. So, you know, the Baker Tilly estimate that we received for the school district is that we could face up to a $931,686, $931,686 loss per year once the fire territory starts with all four entities. Obviously, that would be a problem for the school district. And school districts, basically, that would leave us with two options. Option one essentially is cutting costs. We, I took a, I looked real quick and, you know, when you cut costs, essentially that means you cut personnel because our budgets are eighty to ninety percent are our personnel costs. So beginning teacher salary for South Madison Schools right now is $38,014. We pay about $25,000 in health insurance and about $5,500 in other benefits, retirements and such. So that makes a beginning teacher cost the district about $70,000. So to, to get even on losing $931,000 a year, we'd have to cut fourteen teachers. So that has an impact on, depending on what level it is, it could be, you know, it could be three hundred kids, it could be a thousand kids that we have to, we'd have to put in a crowded classroom. So obviously, that would not be what we're looking to do. Our other option would be to try to raise revenue. And we've got a couple of options for that. And quite honestly, as the town's growing, we, you know, there's some promise to that. You know, one of the ways we raise revenue is if our assessed valuation would come up and give us more money under the property tax caps. At some point, Pendleton's gonna have the, it's gonna have revenue under those caps that we can afford all these types of things. But it's really difficult for us right now until that assessed valuation comes up. And that, well, that'll happen with all these houses because you're trading residential properties in for farmland. And you'll trade in a house that might have an assessed valuation of $300,000 instead of an acre of farmland that's worth $1,200. So that's one avenue we have. The other avenue we have, obviously, is that our student, we're anticipating student growth and enrollment. We're funded by, by that. And so every, every new kid we get adds money to our system. But that's, that's somewhat unstable for us to bank on because that fluctuates every year. So it's hard for us to determine when we would be able to recoup $900,000 a year based on student enrollment. Of course, the third thing we could do is we could always pass, we have the option to pass a referendum, which we talked about last time. We're one of the taxing units that have that ability. But the problem that we see with the referendum is that's going to tax everyone in our entire school district if we do that. And several of those people are not going to receive, they're out of the fire territory. So particularly out to the east side of the district, Adams Township and Markville, we would raise their taxes. We would give them no new services, only to break even with the $900,000. So, and we understand $900,000 is just an estimate, it could go either way. So we, we actually have some people looking at it on our end as well. And we're, and we're trying to figure out at what point we, we break even. And, and we would, we would, you know, be on the, we would be able to afford this. So, you know, one thing I just wanted to point out is, as a school system, over the years, we've worked really hard to be responsible for our taxpayers and we've been really respectful to the other taxing units. If you look at our tax rate, starting in 2007, we had a tax rate of 1.7. The tax rate this year is 1.23. And if you look at that same time period, our maximum tax levy from, from property taxes, starting in 2007, was four, little, about 14.5 million. And this year it is twelve, just a little over 12 million. So that's a reduction of $2.4 million that we've done from 2007 to this year that all the other taxing entities had at their disposal, including all four of the tax entities that are looking to form this fire territory. So we actually reduced our property taxes and gave the other units the opportunity to have a shot at that money under the property tax caps. So during that time, we did that, we lowered our tax rate, we lowered our tax levy. During that time, we built a new middle school, we renovated the intermediate school, we had an activity center. We provided pay increases to all our employees, many of which live in this community. And we also lowered our tax rate and lowered our levy, so everybody else had to piece the pie. So the bottom line to that is, if we take a $900,000 pay hit, if that's what it comes out to be, tax revenue hit, there's really no doubt that we're either gonna have to reduce taxes or reduce teachers or raise taxes. There's no other ability. We don't, we're not a business, we don't have any other way to, to raise our revenue. So just like I said last meeting, we understand the need for the fire territory. We're not against the fire territory, we're against losing almost a million dollars in revenue. So South Madison Schools is asking the four entities involved in the creation of the fire territory to work with the district, come up with some creative solutions so we can offset the financial impact of the district until the tax, till the tax revenue or the assessed valuation gets high enough that we can all be, that we can all live under the tax caps and there's enough money. So we understand, we understand our place in this, we understand we don't have a vote in this. All I'm doing here is pleading to you that we've tried to be responsible with tax money. We've tried to be fair with all the other tax entities. And we're looking at a pretty big hit and we don't have any control for that. We're just asking, you know, that the four entities work with us, you know, that I think there are creative ways that we could do this. But I, but I think that dialogue needs to start. And I, and I think we need to figure out a way that we can sustain this because I don't think any, just as some of our board members said last week, or last meeting, I don't think any of us want to get into a battle between schools and public safety. That's not what we're looking for. But quite honestly, that's what's gonna happen if we have to cut teachers or we have to raise taxes because everybody's gonna know where that came from. We didn't, we haven't raised the taxes since 2007. Fire territory came along, taxes came up. So we're looking for a way to not have to do that and to not have to let go of any of our teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. That was a good, I, I know the $900,000 that Dr. Hall was talking about was a number that, when we finally got our numbers from Baker Tilly, that all of us were shocked, you know, between school corporation, the library, and the park. Them three taxing units was taking the hit. And that's one of the reasons, I hope the numbers still come out that way, even better. But by going with just three entities ma- makes a big difference in that. But it's still a huge hit for the school corporation. So we're, we're gonna start with the numbers. We gotta know the numbers before we can, and we'll get with the school. Chris and I is gonna sit down with the school board, how do they wanna do it? And just let everybody know what the numbers are gonna be once we know the numbers. And that's, that's where we're at on this, is what's the real numbers? What's it really gonna cost? And assessed valuations, and yes, Dr. Hall said the construction that's going on here, we've talked about it in the planning department, there's a lot of money in houses and so forth being built. And it, it's gonna affect them on both sides, on the tax dollars and bigger enrollment at the schools. So they have to look on down the road also. And I understand that. So we gotta get the numbers so that we know all four entities, along with the taxing units, understand where we're going and trying to go. Comments?
Couple of questions were made, I'll add to you, Chris. On the, so, back on the contractual discussion of that. The, how does that, fireside, you're down there anyway. You know, we get a, we get a fire somewhere late tonight, I guarantee you're gonna be down there.
I'll have three trucks.
It's always been that way and, and it works with, is, is the process in place, been a place for years and it doesn't change a whole lot with this, this change. What does change is, I'm a little confused on, is the EMS piece, Volker runs or EMS runs? Probably two thirds of the runs for all incidents, I would say is probably EMS was the guest of my card. But the, with that, with taking on that responsibility, were the crews that are running Ingalls Ambulance now, they're gonna stay on board with that?
They, they have been told by both Chief Donmire as well as myself in a meeting with them that we can't do that without them. We have to have all their members as well.
Explain that when you say, are they gonna?
So they would become part of Pendleton Fire Department.
They're already there.
They're already, they're already members of the Ingalls Fire Department. The Ingalls Fire Department would dissolve. They would be, they would get my, whatever I pay the firefighter, what I pay the EMTs, whatever else to do that. The makeup of the ambulance service absolutely will change. Because instead of running three and four people on an ambulance as we do now, it's gonna be two. And then probably adding a second medic chase vehicle. So we'll have an ambulance staffed up here, an ambulance staffed down there, have a chase vehicle with a medic up here and a chase vehicle with a medic down there, or put a medic and an EMT in each ambulance and then have two ambulances. Right now, basically, the way we run is we run two ambulances. I can guarantee you right now, I'm gonna get two ambulances out the door. And I'll, I'll speak for Ingalls too because they have a crew. And we have a crew. If the third call comes in, well, that's gonna be, you know, who knows? If we have, we have the people. If we have more staffing and we can staff a third ambulance, then absolutely. Because like you said, the majority of our runs are EMS. If we've got a crew that's on the engine, they can cross, they can drive the ambulance, they can take people to the hospital, so on and so forth.
Explain that, about the EMTs, say, down at Ingalls, if they get a call.
So basically, if you take, take the territory, take the interstate, carve it out, thirty-eight, and then just split it in half, would be covered by one station and then the next, the other half will be covered by the other station. So each ambulance in those respective jurisdictions would have a crew in them that would be responding 24/7/365. If the ambulance out of the Pendleton station would go on a call, the next call comes in, it would be responding from the Ingalls station and vice versa. Then if there's another call, we would have the engine backed up to go from there. That's where this is gonna be a stair-step process because I'm not gonna go in and say, I need fifty firefighters right now and make all my volunteers upset by saying, oh, sorry, you can't do anymore because I'm gonna start paying. If we do decide to build a second station somewhere or add a sleeping quarters someplace in the southwest part of the county, then that would be where all of the paid firefighters would go. The Town of Pendleton has the luxury of having several firefighters within three blocks of the fire station. And that would be where the volunteers would, would come. Because I can't see paying somebody 24 hours a day, 365 days a week for three people to be at the Pendleton station when I got five people that live within three blocks that could respond. So take the paid assets from my firefighters and put them at another station that's out in the county that's being built up because I don't know what type of people are out there.
It's misconstrued here, I think. When the chief was talking about another fire station, it's not.
Years down the road. Years down the road.
Yeah, and then we're gonna take the money and go out and build new fires.
These are, these are five, ten, fifteen-year plans.
That's right.
Because I can't, I can't sit here, and a majority of the time that when a fire territory is established, the communities are already built. Brownsburg, Avon, the, I think it's Turkey Creek up in Mississippi-Cinewall, all those communities are already built. And they have nobody to volunteer to the fire departments. We're kind of in a different situation. We're seeing the need to transition to, from a volunteer fire department to a paid on-call slash part-time, however we want to do it, and then roll it into the full-time fire department. So over a course of five, ten, fifteen years, if the plan rolls out that way, then yeah. I had, the numbers that was given to Baker Tilly was based on fifty full-time firefighters. With the community growing as much as it is, it requires seventeen firefighters to be on a scene of one house fire. I can't do that now. I have to rely on mutual aid coming in and they're giving their full-time jobs up to come in here. That's seventeen firefighters on one house fire. And that's standard. So if somebody gets hurt, you know, then I have to answer to why I didn't have seventeen people there. To make entry on a house fire, and it takes two people that goes inside of a house to make a rescue for your loved one, I have to have two people outside, that's OSHA. So there's four right there of my seventeen people that are, that are locked in. If I, I have five or six guys that work at the fire department, work on 24-hour shifts, if they're at their respective fire departments, I don't know how many people aren't gonna have to show up. So that's kind of my fear. Luckily, we've been very blessed, knock on wood, that we've never had a hard time getting our trucks out the door because of the community that we have and the support from the people that are on this department that have laid the groundwork years before I came on. So that's kind of where we're at, is because I know that everything is growing. We're putting more houses in, we're doing this. But we see the need, and when we were asked to, to investigate this, then yeah, I mean, it's a concern amongst everybody, I would, I think.
I'd like to make a little comment, the chief talking about, you know, it's a five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year plan. As an example, the ISU is Catholic. They, they were a volunteer fire department. It took them fifteen years to go from a volunteer to a paid department, over that fifteen years. You know, whether it was ten paid firemen or twenty. It, it took that long to get to that point. So with the building, we got going on here and in Green Township and in Ingalls. If you look at the five, ten, fifteen-year plan, we, we've got to change what we're doing. Because it's, it's gonna be bad when we're all out there and there's a fire in town and we can't come in. So we're gonna figure it out.
It, it, it's a chess match to make sure, you know, like I've always said for years, you know, you take the runs as they come in, we can what everything to death. But, you know, to, to know that I have paid staff, I know I'm gonna get a truck out the door. I know that seconds matter because we get a call, it's four, five minutes before we even respond. And soon as we get the call, we are already behind the eight ball to save that life. So the quicker that we can get out the door with the paid staff, it says thirty seconds to ninety seconds that we're out the door as a standard, as part of our ISO rating, then that helps us as well and it helps as well as you on your homeowner's insurance because we can meet those standards for ISO.
Any more questions?
So part of that, you would think if we do this, it would lower the ISO.
I think so, yeah. That's what I'm, that's, that's, that's my whole goal was to lower the ISO. We're a five and five A right now and I wanna, I wanna lower the ISO, you know. Not, not to sound like I'm negative or anything, but better training records, better training in what we have, everybody be state certified, you know, as far as firefighter one, firefighter two, driver operator. If you get involved in an accident, first thing you say, you know, I say is like, hey, what kind of driving experience you have? Well, I was able to drive through the town. Well, no, I'm state certified, I've been through an operator course. If we get an aerial truck, absolutely, they have a state certified course for aerial operations. To operate a hundred and ten-foot aerial, I don't want just anybody doing it. You know, I wanna make sure that that person that's sitting behind that wheel knows what they're doing because when they go blow through an intersection or somebody hits them, you know, they want to do. And if I'm in the bucket fighting a fire, I wanna make sure that that person driving that truck set it upright. So it's just, it, it's more of that way. And then ISO also says that your fire stations have to be within five driving miles of each other. So that's another thing that goes with water source. You know, we put houses in, we make sure our fire hydrants are spaced properly. The water system can support all of that stuff. So that's another checkbox on ISO. So there's a lot of things that, that we see on ISO that helps homeowner's insurance to drive things down. And the biggest one is time out the door.
This is a lot of like hypothetical information, like a lot of like what ifs and which came first, the chicken or the egg?
Right.
And it's a lot of that. And I'm not opposed to fighting about it all day long. And we're gonna have a couple of meetings to talk about it and figure it out and try to work with the different entities that are gonna get pinched in the funding of this situation. But for, and this isn't a slam dunk for me, I, it's a lot of information that we're all gonna have to learn about. But getting the MOU approved lets us set the groundwork and move forward with the process and start dealing in facts a little bit more than what ifs and projections that we all kind of dreamt up in our heads. So at this point, for me, I would make a motion that we accept. So, at this point, for me, I would make a motion that we accept the MOU and move forward with the process, just so we can get some form of actual hard information to base where we go from this. And I am a thousand percent in favor of these public meetings, getting the public in here, getting them to understand what's getting ready to happen, where the money goes, all of this stuff. But even as a council person, this is a lot of information to take in, so I know it's going to be a lot of information for our citizens to take in. And so, if we're planning on doing this in twenty twenty-three or saying no in twenty twenty-three, or whatever we're going to do here, we need to get the ball rolling. Because I feel like sitting here talking about, well, you know, are we going to have extra households here, or students coming from here, or whatever, isn't a lot of hard information, and I like to deal in hard information.
Okay. Marissa's made a motion, but I'm.
That's fine, keep talking, that's fine, I just, that's totally fine.
Is there anybody online that's got questions or? Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak about the fire territory?
I have a question. The dirty subject of money. We, if I read this right, once we sign this MOU, Ingalls starts paying us a month. Green Township starts paying us, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I read nothing in here about it being back to January first, is that an agreement somebody else made, or?
There's no, there's no necessary agreement on that. It would be based on what we have done in the past to date would be what the, that distribution would be. The Ingalls is based per month going forward.
Right, going forward.
And Green Township, the way this is drafted, for, for twenty twenty-one, it's going to be thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Yeah, if, if.
Once they sign this, right?
Once all four sign this.
Right.
And then for Fall Creek, it's the seventy-four A for the year, flat.
We need to get this signed, and we're halfway into this year, we've been talking about it since last fall. Need to get going and start getting some money to help cover. We have a truck now, I hear down at their station, one of our trucks, any?
No, we do not, not yet.
Okay, okay.
They still have a truck that is out of service, that we provide their en, engine coverage, because their truck is out of service.
So, we're still going.
We're still going down there responding on, on every.
They're basically a fire department in name only, right?
For the likelihood terms, they have a tanker and an ambulance.
Hate to say it that way, but.
Well, you know, the last time they came up here, they drove a tanker, it wouldn't puff, but they drove it for a taxi. We've got to get, get signed.
I agree with Marissa and Willie. This, this is the start that's been going on for a year and a half.
Longer than that, because how long has it been discussed?
Over the years. Over the years.
I guess a good start, I'm, I'm back on the EMS, money does change hands on that. We bill for those runs, we take somebody to the hospital. So, right now, it's five oh one C three, and so the, those revenues go into the EMS support pack. We do kick in some, what, two hundred thousand, they bring the town or the township for EMS operations on that, all well and good. On, so this change over that emerges into the fire department, so those revenues from EMS runs that will change, that will dissolve, it's five oh one C three, that will come into the, uh, uh, call for some of the departments through the town.
That's the way, that's the way the board makeup is when it was established in nineteen seventy-four.
Okay. Do we know what kind of money that is? I have no idea.
I have no idea. I'd have to go back and pull it, pull the record of what it is. I know right now the ambulance service is looking at purchasing an ambulance at three hundred thousand dollars-ish. So, I don't know, I don't know what, if they buy an ambulance, I don't know what that takes out of money.
For a matter of record, if someone's going to ask, the ambulance service is a private entity. So, that's, that's been one of the big issues trying to get through to this. Chief Nodine and Chief Meyer finally got everybody together, I shouldn't say finally, got everybody together to lay it on the table and talk about the ambulance service for the fire department. Because everybody thinks the ambulance service is part of the fire department. Well, it is, but it's not, okay? It's a private company that is hard to get raw numbers from. I mean, that's a good way to put it.
Right.
And like when chief says they're looking at buying a new ambulance, I was, Mr. Hall, Joel's sitting there, you're going to take this away from me and they're going to spend three hundred thousand dollars. So, I want everybody to understand that. It's different money, I know they understand, but different money, different.
And then when, and when the ambulance service, if the ambulance service dissolves, I mean, they, they ultimately have, they can even rescind on that. But, the, the, there would be a line, a budget line item in the fire department, the fire territory's budget for EMS. It's a non-reverting fund that if we go out and bill an EMS and transport a patient to the hospital, we get that money, it goes into the non-reverting fund to help offset some of that capital equipment that we're going to purchase, you know, ambulances, Tahos and, and, and stuff like that, can't be used for salaries, but it can be used for capital equipment.
So, we make this change under, looking at not the territory, but under the contractual arrangement that was kind of part of this. So, those funds would, when that change occurs, would come into the call.
The fund, the funds would stay the same, if, if the contract is signed, the funds would stay the same. It, it's PEA and BFD, it's completely separate.
Completely separate.
The only time that PEA would dissolve would be when the fire territory is established.
Right. Not, not until they're not under the contract arrangement?
Not under that contract arrangement, no. It's just it says that PEA will participate and they're not going to back out, and then the fire territory have to figure out where they're going to find EMS coverage.
So, they would retain their five oh one C three status?
Until January one of twenty twenty-three, yes.
If you form the territory.
If we form the territory, that is correct.
Got it.
Joel, go ahead. If you will, Joel, go.
Yeah. Let me come up here. Just, just a question about Friday. Uh, fire and ambulance services, is that like the schools, Joel's San Fran, West five hundred South, about, I live in Green Township, it's complicated. Nothing out there, hearts grow, it's ever been simple. The funding for fire and ambulance service, is, is that come out of, is that based on township and schools?
No.
Here's the reason for my question, is because Lepel annexed into Green Township, and all it does, you know, all the way down to seven hundred south.
So did Ingalls. If, if you really look at the, it, it got so complicated in some of our meetings, because somebody said, no, that's, that's Green Township, no, that's Ingalls, no, that's, I mean, and we actually took the township, not township, but the geographical area and color-coded it, so we could understand all these little places that were annexed, out of green, into green, from Ingalls, and it, it's, that's the reason why the states come in, I think, that's an opinion, but the state has come in and said, when you annex, it's got to be one hundred percent participational, because they're pieced building to grab certain areas. Really made touches like Joel was saying, you don't know, you know, people in certain area in Green Township think they live in Pendleton, and it's an Ingalls address that we're covering. I mean, it, it's very complicated to, to understand. And, and this will, in my opinion, this will help us understand fire protection for the whole area that is sat aboard down the road.
In my understanding, Lepel is not in the conversation.
That is correct.
That's right. They are in a fire territory though.
They are?
Yes.
On customer.
Yeah.
At one time, it provided an ambulance and fire service to our Supreme Council, is that no longer the case?
Well, they do, what was annexed by the town of Lepel into Green Township is still covered by the Lepel Fire Station. It's just that the trustee doesn't have to pay a contract for that, that swath of land.
Why do they buy that?
Because they're.
What's the case then?
They're, because they're under the contract by their provider unit, which was the town of Lepel, and then they annexed it and they provide that service by contract.
So, does that mean that they're receiving taxpayer funding to do that?
I would assume so.
I'd say, yeah.
From Lepel, right?
They would be going from Lepel, yeah.
So, with the fire territory that you're proposing, that would end that agreement? So, you would have double, you would have double.
No, 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 no. It would, it would be just everybody in unincorporated portions of Green Township.
The ones that aren't affiliated with the municipality like Lepel or Pendleton, because like, I'm in the same boat. I live in Green Township, but I am annexed into the town.
Okay.
And so, it's kind of the same situation. Those folks that have a Lepel, that are annexed into Lepel but still reside in Green Township.
So, we're paying for fire and ambulance protection through Lepel?
Through Lepel, yes.
But under the new fire territory, we'd also be paying that.
You would not be paying down to this, to this territory.
If you live in a county with a Green Township.
So, that section is not going to be affected by?
They're not going to be, you're not going to be taxed twice for fire.
Which brings up.
These are some of the.
Here brings up another question for me too. Is, uh, what would happen, and this is just a hypothetical question, if Lepel decides, and I understand that part, because my neighbor's going to come forward, he's, he's shared some of his ideas, what he would like to see in future for the town in development. How would this affect? It may not affect it at all with what you just discussed, but in the future, in funding of this fire territory, if Lepel decided that they were going to offer tax abatements to businesses in those areas, how would that affect the funding?
It wouldn't, I don't think it would affect anything with the, with this fire territory. That would all be under Lepel.
They couldn't, they couldn't offer an abatement in an area that's not part of their municipality, correct, Joel?
That's correct.
Because you're not going to offer the fire protection to that area.
Correct.
So, there's going to be a carved out area of Green Township, that's not going to be covered by that?
Correct. And the map is very confusing.
It's very complex.
How many homes are involved? Do you know how many homes are carved out of that area?
That is.
Incorporated area?
Yeah.
No.
Just to kind of get an idea.
No, I mean, I can, I can, if I had my computer here, I could pull up a map and I could fill it up on the screen, but I don't.
We can.
It's, it's very, I mean, they come all the way down to like, sick which are I guess?
Fifty-five, four, two, nine.
Fifty-five hundred blocks, so Lepel's at sixty-four hundred block, or I think it's sixty-five hundred block off of one thirty-two, is how far east that they come off of one thirty-two.
So, I guess the question really is, you're not talking about fire protection, that's not going to be needed for the, uh, fire territory, for the entire area of Green Township, but just a certain part of.
The unincorporated area.
The unincorporated area.
The unincorporated area. Anything that's Lepel and Green Township, that's a whole different levy, um, formula.
Let me, let me throw out something else.
Is that, is that small, or is that half of Green Township or quarter of that?
Right now, Vernon Township, Fort Belk, has a contract for fire protection for Green Township, a parcel. Okay. So, that was another.
Would you hear about, like, when there was a fire in Summer Lake and they tried to figure out, you know, whose situation is this? Well, Vernon had the contract to cover Summer Lake through Green Township.
I think Joel, one thing you need to know, when Baker Tilly did the financial analysis, they did a parcel by parcel. So, they knew which, by parcel, is it inside the town corporation of Lepel, or is it outside? They went parcel by parcel and did the financial analysis. They knew which parcel were in, uh, South Madison Community School Corporation, they knew which parcel was in Franklin Lepel School Corporation. So, it was parcel by parcel, and then they, they went through and did the aggregate numbers, so it was an analysis parcel by parcel. It was not just a swath here in this area here, it was parcel by parcel.
Thank you very much.
Good, any questions?
Yeah.
That's all we need.
And that's, that, that's the hard part about the fire territories, because you say Green Township and everybody assumes that, well, I live in Green Township, but I've been annexed by Lepel, and then this fire territory does not affect them. They get their services from Lepel, so I agree.
Thank you, man.
And the, the thing too about your address, when it says Lepel or Pendleton on your address, that has nothing to do with this. All that is, is what post office your mail comes out of. That's all of that is, it has nothing to do with jurisdictions.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I, I've got a motion from Marissa to approve. Approval of this is just one signature. Council will get the approval of this, then I'll sign it along with Fred Gaskell and Greg Valentine and Scott Walker. So, I've got a motion to approve the MOU for the fire.
I forget something. We have a motion, you say?
I got a second.
I got a motion, I've got a second now, so, what?
We're voting basically to authorize Chip to sign this memorandum.
We have that tab.
Robert Jones.
I'm on the ambulance service, retired from the car, twenty-five years, I'm going to abstain. How's that, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
I'm abstaining.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Ab.
Aye.
Motion's carried. For the end of the month, after the twenty-fourth, I'll say. Okay. I'll make sure that you have all four copies.
Really, I know the.
Forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At that point, can I start collecting money?
Yes, from, based on the, uh, the MOU or the other entities, yes.
Okay, new business. Orders twenty-one dash twelve right-of-way permits, Scott.
Okay, um, what this does is protect the, the town, it clarifies, um, how we handle permits, when, let's say.
Thank you.
Skaggs.
Thank you. When a contractor or the gas company, the telephone company, uh, Fall Creek Regional Waste District comes into Pendleton and is working in our right-of-way, it, it spells out the rules, they have to get a permit, it also spells out the fees. Um, gives staff leeway, um, when they do come in, uh, it may be a situation where we want to waive some of the fees, or it may be a situation where they're doing so much construction that it's going to really scar the town, that we, um, require them to do more than just, um, just patch the road. For instance, if they do enough, it spells out if they do enough, uh, work in a, in a town block or a section of road, um, that they need to repaint that road.
That block.
That block.
Yeah.
The gas company is about ready to come in and do extensive replacement of service lines, and the statement to me is, I told them, well, you scar up our roads and you're going to pave it. He said, not unless you have an ordinance. I said, you're just talking to a ten-year legislator, and I can write or this is all day long. So, then I wrote this up.
Well, you did.
And I did. So, um, and it also gives, uh, staff the ability to go to the opposite end and wave it, we've never, traditionally, we've never, um, uh, Fall Creek Regional Waste District, on one end, when they usually come in and they need to put in a lateral, it's no big deal, but as you know, when they came in and replaced the line, they did pave a lot of the roads. So, it gives us the option to staff to work with Fall Creek Regional Waste District, um, based on their situation. And it gets, we get, if you look at the fees, we get heavy-handed if we find somebody working in the street and they don't have a work permit.
Any other questions for Scott? This is a very good piece of orders.
Yeah, good step of faith, uh, good step to faith, it appears.
Sure is, yeah. Do damage and paperwork.
Yeah. You got to restore it better than, than what you, uh, what the town.
Any more comments or questions from the council?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one dash twelve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, what?
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chip Ab.
Aye.
Order's twenty-one dash twelve is approved.
Make the motion to suspend the rules for a second reading.
I'll second that.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second, to sustain the rules, not, or a rule.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chip Van.
Aye.
Okay, uh, rules are suspended, so I'm gonna ask for a, uh, motion to have the second reading approved on this tonight.
Make a motion to the second reading.
Second.
Well, I got a motion of second for the ordinance twenty-one dash twelve, second reading.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Chip Van.
Aye.
The motion is, uh, approved, so the order becomes effective immediately. Okay, next, new business, ordinance twenty-one dash thirteen. If a contract, what this says is probably the biggest ordinance I've ever seen. It's pages thick. And, uh, did I read all of it? No, I sat in the meetings when we went through all this with Willie and Scott and the MPa people. Best way to explain it is, it's a contract so we can keep buying electricity. And it's a very lengthy contract. Craig is our representative on the MPa board. Anything else we can really say about it, Craig?
Uh, well, I brought a graph from MPa here to answer any questions you may have. He can answer them a lot better than I can, so.
Thanks, Craig. Thanks for having me.
He was way over my head and the neighbor had on him, so.
Well, Dirk Gary with IMPA, managed member services. If anybody does have any questions, see, you know, I'm happy to entertain those and help out any way I can.
I just have one question.
Absolutely.
Um, why is there a thirty-year notice?
That's the best question. I bet you wouldn't believe me if I told you, other people ask that too. No, it's a good question, and the reason for that is that the energy sector is changing quite a bit now with the new administration coming in. New technology, uh, everything is coal. We are still primarily coal, like many others, industries such as Duke, Ditzkowek, and everybody else. Isn't the same boat. Really what this comes down to is long-term financing. Uh, to get these power plants or, uh, generation sites, so to speak, up and running, it takes a great deal of planning. Where, if you're a small business owner and you take out a loan, you're expecting to either return your investments, you own a few months, maybe six months, you can start paying back, and things are growing good. In this industry, it takes many years to get something online. You have a lot of preliminary planning, purchasing of the territory, getting things hooked up and transmission. And once you finally get that generation site up and running, it can take a decade, depending upon the type that it is. So you're looking at many years, you know, just investing and getting that going before you flip on the switch and then you're generating electricity, getting that return of your investment coming back. So in the energy sector, we invest in millions or billions, we be collecting pennies, it takes a lot of time for that. So really, this helps with our bonding. We have a good bond rating right now. We wanna keep that for our members because IMPA is a not-for-profit, operates at cost. We're different than Duke and everybody else that's an investor on utility. They're looking after the shareholders and the dividends. Where Pendleton is a shareholder, essentially. You, you guys have to say, you have a commissioner, which is Craig, you have a vote and a voice. So we operate at cost on behalf of the member communities. So whatever costs we incur, whether it's fuel mix, you know, coal, or solar, or wind, whatever it could be, or financing these interest rates, the better interest rates we have, that also goes in our cost too. So to keep costs down, that's the need for long-term financing. It, it helps the member communities that way.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
If, if you would.
No.
I, I see you've got the.
The handouts?
Yeah. Before you leave.
Absolutely.
The rest of the members have that end out, because it's, it's, you can learn a lot just reading that. Why the house comes and where he's coming from.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments about it?
Thank you.
If not. Can I have a motion for ordinance twenty-one dash thirteen for the MPa contract, please?
Salute.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion of the second for ordinance twenty-one dash thirteen.
We're doing basically the same thing here again. We're, uh, forcing our votes to approve Chet signing this agreement.
I tried, I forgot to say that.
Yeah. So basically, that's what we need to do. Marissa?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Shane?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chip?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
How many years is that time as federal regulations chapter go through?
What's that, I'm sorry?
The time it takes to get all your federal regulations approved.
Oh.
You know, planning ahead for a new power plant, it's gotta be, forever.
It's, yeah, it's gonna take a good time, and it's hard to say right now with the new administration because there's gonna be some new mandates coming out, I'm sure. So I'm sure whatever number I tell you is probably gonna change, but it's gonna take a good time.
This one is, yeah, this one's a little different. This one is an ordinance, so it wouldn't need to go through the standard ordinance procedure. So we, you wouldn't need to suspend the rules to, to, uh, pass on the first night it's been introduced. And then by, if you adopt the ordinance, you are also authorizing Chet to, as Willie just said, to sign any contract necessary. Like Scott has to sign something, I have to sign something.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules, do the second reading.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I got a second. Will?
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Marissa.
Aye.
Chip.
Aye.
Okay, we've got a motion to suspend the rule by vote zero, so, uh, ordinance twenty-one dash thirteen. I need a motion to approve the second reading, please.
I'll make a motion, we approve the second reading.
I'll second that.
Marissa?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Shane?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chip?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we gonna, uh, are you signing for your government?
I cannot. Uh, that'll be the, um, the head of the board, board president.
Do we need to get this and send it to him once we have his signature, don't we?
Yes, sir. Once you get your signatures, your opinion letter, your certificate, and, you know, copies of everything, send that over to our attorney, Peter Prettyman, um, and then we'll, we'll take it from there again, it's signed on our end. And then if you need original copies of the final documents, we can help you out, copies done as well.
If you could just let Craig know where we need to send all that to?
Absolutely.
We'll get it done. Appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate you putting the faith in there and saying thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Okay, we got one more thing on old business. And the first thing I will say about it, it says Resolution twenty-one signatures. This was the first meeting where we put in a seventy-two hour limit, and he broke it the first meeting. I just want everybody to know that. Now, I'm a stickler, I really am, because Jeff and I probably don't think we really disagreed about, and he'd always stuck up for himself, saying, no, I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But what we're doing now is, Monday night at four o'clock, six o'clock, there's no changes to the agenda unless we make it here before that. Because we, we were just throwing too much at the ladies upstairs at four o'clock on Thursday evening of the second Thursday in the month. So I'll be quiet now, but I just want everybody to know that our town manager violated that first, first.
Did I tell him I have to?
No, no, come on.
I'll let my attorney speak.
Your attorney is our attorney.
No conflict here.
No conflict.
Scott got a, uh, a notice, we have a, the town received a substantial, uh, Community Crossings grant. And, uh, it was, the signatures on that, they're somewhat persnickety about the signatures on that, on who can sign them. They asked for a resolution that, uh, the town executive or the town board authorizes who they authorized to sign the thing. And, uh, they said, send us a copy of the resolution that allowed it. Well, they sent it to Scott, what, Tuesday morning, or something like that. So it was after the deadline. Now.
Don't stick up for it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna stick up for him and also kiss your, you know, on here a little bit too, because it, uh, there was a mistake in it, and so we had to change it, which backs up you guys. But what this is, is a resolution that authorizes on grant documents either the town manager, the town council president to execute. And so we could send this off to the, uh, to the, in this case, it's Community Crossings. And this says that, yeah, Scott or Chet or whoever holds your positions in the future have the authority to sign on behalf of the town.
Most of this is what end off, which.
Yeah.
They got different rules, even though there's a state statute, the way I understand it, but they want this piece of paper on resolution stating that the town manager or the executive town council president can sign these papers to get some things going. So that's all it is. So.
It's an administrative matter.
Yeah. Any questions or comments about it? Motion, please. Resolution twenty-one, and I have no idea what number. I don't like that. That's one of the things we want to work.
I'll make a motion. Jeff will be added by the, by the, well, get with the clerk treasurer to figure out what that is. Also, to the, uh, the one that was presented to you, there has been an addition, as, as I referenced. The, the title has changed to a resolution, the Town Council, Pendleton, Madison County, Indiana, authorizing the town manager and town council president to execute. And then I've added one whereas paragraph, the fourth paragraph, whereas IC thirty-six five dash two dash two provides that a town council president is the chief executive officer of the town. And then later, we're, on the last whereas paragraph, you're asking, you're adding Pendleton town manager or the town council president. And then on paragraph one after the therefore, town manager or town council president. So this just gives your, your manager and your chief executive the ability to sign those. But, but, sorry, Bob.
Thank you, Robert. No, we need to get this done. We're gonna burn it out.
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion of the second to approve Resolution twenty-one.
Dash, dash, dash.
Yeah. Go ahead, Willie.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chip Van.
Aye.
Okay, that's Resolution twenty-one is approved.
Good work in getting that done, Scott.
Thanks.
It's great, that's a good project.
Yeah. A lot of money.
Yeah.
Sir, any comments for the public at all? Anything online?
No, no, thank you.
Anybody else? And I stand in your judgment.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.